Recording live on Facebook. Meeting is now steaming.
There it is. All right, thank you Katie, better you than me. All right, here we go, we're gonna get into our committee meeting this evening. We have three first readings and one second reading, no third or pending. Jim, you're up.
Hello, everybody, welcome to tonight's broadcast. We open a finance committee at six oh five. Starting out with Resolution twenty-one R twenty-nine. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Advantage Homes LLC for to purchase an installation of a twenty twenty-one Adventure sixteen by seventy-six Nevada six seven six three B dash N modular housing unit for use at the West Side Fire Station declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Who'd like to start out before I start asking my six hundred questions?
All right, let me jump in and I'm gonna turn it over to Assistant Chief Young. What precipitates this is what at the, it appears at this point in time, pretty certain that we're going to, Clinton Fire has decided to become more independent. We've had a series of three-year contracts with them and several years ago to, because we wanted to have a presence on the west side of the tracks for faster response time for the citizens on the west sides of the tracks, because as you folks all know, you know, the EMS unit could get caught a lot of minutes if unfortunately it trades there. So that worked out well, pretty well, let's just put it that way. And then we manned a joint station and over the years, there's been a glitch here, a glitch there. Long story short, that contract expires October third of this year. We've had discussions with Clinton. We've had several discussions with them over the past year and coming into this year and come into the spring, the indication is that I think they're gonna put a levy on and they pretty much wanna be independent with their fire. So that being the case, which is, I'll let Assistant Chief Young speak to our fires' reaction to that. It's, gee, it's disappointing, but you know, we're not, we're not shaken. So we have to reopen the West Side Station. And I think we'll actually even have better service and there's a variety of reasons, it'll be all our guys, not, not a couple of our guys and some Clinton people. So they took a look at the West Side Station, we saw this coming when we put the, when we had our budget meetings in January, February, March, and we knew that this was a possibility, if not a likelihood. So then it became two questions, how do we, we have that Melody Village Station, could we refit that and remodel it and reopen it? So that there'd be a place for the men to, to live while they're on duty? And, and it turned out that a more economical option is this modular unit. And I don't wanna steal all your thunder, but for a couple, one reason is that we have equity, you know, it's if and when we don't need it, it has value, it has resale value. And, and then secondly, rather than putting money into that building, we have been doing long range, you know, we try to look ahead. And there is, one of the things that we're considering and I've already set money aside for is the point in time where we build a, really a permanent station over there, which is gonna cost some money. So what we don't wanna do is pour money into this building when it's, you know, it's conceivable that five years from now, we might wanna have a more permanent station. And I think as we look forward to, you know, potential residential commercial growth, we're probably gonna want that down the road. So, you know, the idea was, let's not sink money into this Melody Village Station, let's get something that, that suffices in the medium. So that's where we are, Assistant Chief Young, and then if you can talk to council about what you found and why you think this is a good option.
Sure, thank you Mayor, good evening, everybody. Yeah, I was tasked by Chief Leslie to start looking at some options and I immediately looked at the existing footprint there and preliminary got just some real rough estimates and from, from right from the start, we were looking at a minimum of, it was forty thousand dollars just for the general contractor, that was no electrical plumbing, nothing at all. And so years ago, we had a, a chance at that time, we had to kinda look and start planning for contingencies. And I had looked into the possibility of like a modular type structure that wouldn't be permanent necessarily, but it could last for many years if need be. So I started looking into that and I was able to find right here in Dalton, Ohio, Advantage Homes. We met with a gentleman down there and we can actually purchase a brand spanking new, this is a new home, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath home. And it's basically, it's forty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars for the home and then the sixty-three hundred and fifty-seven to have it moved in, put up, put in, hooked up and set. So we're getting into that, it'd be forty-nine nine ninety. And for, we would never be able to do near what we need to do at that existing station, not to mention, as the mayor said, long-term, that would be less than the optimal spot to have a station two in long-range planning and looking forward. And so this way here, it's not a permanent change to that piece of property. And at the end of it all, if need be, we can return it right back the way it sits today and there will still be some value left to that unit to resell because it is a new unit. So that is why we come to that conclusion.
You also did some pricing for an alternative modular unit?
I, I did, Mayor, and this, the gentleman down there at Advantage, he was very, very willing to work with us and did. I actually originally started with Factory Expo Home Centers out of Indiana. And a lot of these obviously come out of Indiana, there's a lot of manufacturers there. The one thing I ran at you right off the bat is obviously, Mr. Stock, you probably really get this. In the building trades right now, there's, there's a shortage of a lot of supply. So we're looking at no less, no less than five months to even get it in the, in the ballpark to where it's even would be possible to have a unit. So that would put us right up against there and that was one of the things that Chief Leslie was very concerned about, that we will maintain, we will have no lapse in service to our people. So we would be up and running and ready to go, so. And also quite honestly, it come in at a staggeringly high, much higher price. Obviously, it was a little more in moving the unit and doing that. The next closest price I got just is, it was seventy thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars, which obviously was gonna be much more than what we wanted to get into. So as it is now, you know, the forty-nine nine ninety and it's a brand-new unit that we can, we can sell if, you know, if it's in there five years and we're able to move on and go to a little more permanent type station for the future, that we would be able to just sell it if need be and return that property to its original footprint.
And timing-wise, I'm sorry, Mr. Cott. Where are we at in terms of, you know, when do we, you know, if we're going in this direction, how soon do you need, do they need it? Go ahead.
As soon as possible, actually. He's, he's holding, he's holding this. He took no money down because it's the city and so he, he's holding it pending notification tomorrow. I will be on the phone first thing tomorrow and let him know whether or not that, that it's gonna be a secure deal or not, because then immediately, he's gonna put it back on the market, obviously, and sell it. And then it won't be available and then that would just open up a whole nother potential problem for us so that we're ready to go in the event that we go on our own.
Okay, who else has questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
This price, this includes everything that they're going to need for this unit for the people to sleep in, am I correct?
Actually, we'll have to provide some bedding, that was the other advantage to this unit, being brand-new. One of the requirements, it has to be a HUD-ready home, so it comes furnished with all the appliances. So that's a huge save and they're all brand-new. The other units I was looking, I tried, I tried looking at like the refurbished side and going down that route. None of them come with any kind of appliance, so that was gonna start adding up too. So like I said, this come in and it was just like, oh my goodness, this is, this is a quite a good opportunity for us. So we would have, like I said, bedding and, you know, a few chairs, things like that. But for the most part, all the expense of the appliances, it's all included.
As I'm reading this, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but it says it's going to hook up to water and sewer.
Right.
Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, and the way it will do is because we're actually able to save significant on this because Station Two, as it sits now, it has an existing well that we're able to utilize that. It has existing septic that we're able to use that. The, the next, the, the real, only other expense that we'd be looking at is, well, there will be an expense to run new service because we can't piggyback off the existing station, that's not allowed. So, and I actually met with Ohio Edison, there again, they were very, very accommodating to us. They're actually willing, they're gonna come in and set the pole and set the can, it requires an additional can and they're not charging us for that. So the only thing we'll have is the electrician's price and actually, I don't have it back yet. I've been, I'm waiting on, I just met with them yesterday, so he's trying to get that to me, so there will be some additional costs, but.
And the truck, the truck, I'm assuming would be housed in Station Two?
Yes, the house, the house would sit right adjacent to the station, similar to what the Station Two operation, the Clinton Station is now. Be a little closer actually, but yes, the truck, the squad, and there will be a chase vehicle assigned to that station over there. And then the house is right there with it.
And that station is, can, it's still up upgraded enough that it will accommodate that?
Oh yes, yeah, it's, it's currently, it has, actually, several years back, we received a grant. It has a high energy, high efficiency furnace and at the tube heaters and was all insulated. The, the building that stands there itself is relatively updated, actually. It just doesn't have, it doesn't have living quarters.
Housing facility.
Right.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I had Judy hit on the water and sewer, I wanted to ask about that, but you answered that question. Speaking of trucks, we have trucks to, to use, right, we're not buying new trucks for this.
No, absolutely. As it is right now, we, we provide equipment at Clinton, the shared station. All we'll do is move our equipment right up the road and put it back in our station. As it is right now, because we didn't have the need, we were, we've been storing a county incident management trailer in that station for a couple of years now. And Chief Leslie's already made notification to the county that, that we would no longer be able to accommodate that because we'll be moving our stuff back in there. So yes, we can move everything, it's all our equipment, nothing, nothing additional.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? So we spoke of staffing. No longer having the Clinton staff, or do we have enough staff to staff?
I understand, yes, and actually currently, we are in the process of adding some additional part-time personnel just to cover that we do, where we ensure that we have plenty of staffing. So that, that's not really much of a concern.
Okay, I guess my, my first thing is, how sure are we that, that Clinton's going to wanna end our contract? You mentioned that we're pretty certain and they're, they're going to possibly be doing a levy. Do we have a, I mean, are we gonna invest a ton of money for them to come to us and say, hey, our levy fell, let's, let's kick things back again?
Best I can tell you is, we had discussions, there was a, there was a specific discussion about, I'll say a disciplinary issue involving a, an officer who worked in both departments and New Franklin had a point of view of how it should be handled and Clinton had a different point of view. And pursuant to the agreement, we, the chiefs met, couldn't resolve that one. It went to the mayors and the mayors met and we, and, and we're unable to resolve it because we weren't willing to, we felt our position was the proper position. So at that point, it became a question and I, this was maybe two months ago and I could pull out the actual date. But at that point, we said, well, we're either gonna have to take this to some further mediation or something. But, you know, you know, by the way, where are we going? And their chief was present, our chief was present and, and their mayor was present and I was as well. And that's when the discussion was that it appeared that they were, you know, their intention was to go in a different direction altogether. We don't necessarily have to mediate this specific dispute because it, and I keep using these same terms, it looks like we're going in different directions. At that meeting, I asked the mayor, I said, well, you need to let us know because we don't have to do anything to terminate the contract, the contract terminates itself. If it's not renewed, it's not renewed. So we need to hear from you if it's your intention to continue to, to man this joint station. And that was, you know, that was a couple of months ago, we, I jogged it one more time, haven't heard anything back. Where, you know, our guys have been monitoring the meetings down there in Clinton to see, to get a sense of what, what Clinton's intentions seem to be. And I guess finally, I would say that this one issue we were unable to resolve, it wasn't the only one. We had our own issues relative to the extent of quality control that we could manage with this joint station. And I don't mean, I don't say that to demean or diminish Clinton's personnel at all. But we had those separate concerns. So at this point in time, you know, having not, you know, heard anything from the other side, it is my opinion, based upon the opinion that's been expressed from the Assistant Chief and the chief, that the, the citizens of New Franklin would be better served if we go in our own direction on this. If, I don't know what's gonna transpire down in Clinton, quite frankly. And whether or not it's gonna work for them, I wish them the best. Tim, do you wanna expand a little further on that?
God bless you.
Thank you.
Basically, I echo exactly what the mayor said. I, I feel, I feel we can give a, we have much better control of our product if it's, if it's overseen strictly by us and, and I, I support it a hundred percent.
But we really don't know if they have pulled out, you just think they have.
Well, they haven't, and it's not that they've pulled out, they haven't expressed any interest in extending the contract. That meeting I spoke of was February sixteenth. So at that point, that's when we asked them to let us know what, what direction they were going. And we're now two months later. We've had no contact with them whatsoever.
What would your answer be, Paul, if they came back after we passed this and bought everything and said, hey, we do want it? What would your answer be?
Quite frankly, I would say it's too late.
Okay, so I'll just run down the list in no particular order. So with the building, you mentioned that we had a lot of stuff, already been done, updated, insulation, heaters, things like that. But what additional costs are we gonna see? What's, what's, you know, I drove out there, it looks like we have some lighting issues on the outside, of course, I couldn't go inside to see. But do we have issues with that? Do we have, you mentioned about running new electricity to, to do the, the housing. Do we have, do we have enough electricity within the building to handle new communication and stuff? And what about the communications or what about the electronics? How much is this gonna cost us to do, I guess?
Right, right. Well, the existing building, I just had, like I said, I met with the electrician and the engineer from Edison yesterday there. The building does have sufficient electric going to it. The house requires a separate service altogether. And then as far as communications, that was, that was a project I, I'm not sure, I wasn't involved with, but I believe it was, was brought to council with the radios and things at that time, it was incorporated. Because we still have, in the operation, we still have radios down there that are radios that we use to communicate with. So all that, I guess, all that's utilized in that operation down there now is simply gonna be moved. Our, our stuff will be moved up to our new station. So as far as, excuse me, as far as like new equipment like that, there'd be nothing other than we're updating our portable radios, which we already were doing anyhow. So, so there's nothing that, that I know of that, that we've come up with would be above and beyond where we're having to come back and say, oh, we didn't think of this or that.
So, so with the cog, is there new equipment going into the Clinton facility and that'll move to our facility or?
Well, actually, that, that new equipment has not even been installed down there because we were in this wait place.
Okay.
We didn't move on it, we have it, it's ready to go, it's just a matter of, we didn't wanna put it in down there and then a couple of months from now, saying now we gotta move it and pay to have it moved up there. It's, it's, it's basically, it's waiting on us, they're waiting on us to tell them where we, where we're gonna have it put in there.
Okay. With the, with the new house, you, you talked about the furniture, that just gonna be some bedding and some other, you know, theater-style seating, sixty-five inch TV, things like that, the basics. What about, will there be a walkway between the, the building and, and the house? And then are there any zoning issues?
Yeah.
With putting a house there?
I actually spoke with Barry and he said, being that it's for the public safety service like this and it's a somewhat of an emergent type thing, that that was not gonna be the, an issue. And as far as walkway, it actually is gonna sit right at the back of the asphalt apron, it's right there. So there's asphalt and there's a door right at the side. It has been discussed amongst the guys, some of us were talking and eventually, if it would need be, we could put like a covered walkway over to there. But it's, it's, I mean, you're talking less than probably fifteen feet, roughly fifteen feet out the front door, right in the door there.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a long way when it's raining really hard or snowing really hard.
Yeah, as it is now, they, as it is now, I don't know, like down at the current station, they have about a hundred and twenty-foot run if they gotta come out of the house and go get in an engine down there. So it's significantly shorter.
And then with, with staffing, we mentioned, so how much will our payroll increase? Because we're currently not paying a, a set number of firefighters that are from Clinton. How much of a hit are we going to take with our payroll? And I guess, like I asked before, what's our, our total cost gonna be to, to make this move that we're still not a hundred percent sure we need to make?
Right. Well, I, I guess I, I can tell you this, I, I did not run those numbers. I know Chief Leslie has all that because when we initially started looking at this and we talked with the mayor and Susan at that time, we kinda started floating these ideas and saying, hey, we might have to, you know, be here on our own before we know it. And basically, the way it is now, we pay for one and a half of the three people that are down there. So we would, we would absorb one and a half more of that. And I, like I said, I know for a fact the chief has it in his budget, it's budgeted, it's not something that we can't absorb or handle. But to give you the exact figure, I do, I do not have that.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
I do have a question, I'm wondering if perhaps, Jim, that would be online, that we could go, actually go online and see what those contracts pay? Isn't there a state website that lists all of that? Isn't that public record that we could go on and see? Am I right, Chief Young?
I, I'm not sure I follow you, I'm a little confused.
He was asking how much more it would be? And you said you didn't know how much it would be for another one and a half employee. But I think most of our contracts, there is a way we can get to them online, all of that is public.
Well, no, see, right now, that, that's, what that is, is part-time wages. So it's not in the, it's not like a contracted full-time union employee, these are part-timers that we're utilizing.
And what benefits would they have?
They're part-time employees, they don't get benefits.
Okay.
Just like we have now, we bolster our ranks with part-time people. It's the, it's the exact same thing, that's what's currently utilized down there, part-time people.
So eventually, we would need one and a half full-time or continue to go with part-time?
No, it would, no, we have, no, that, right now, it would just, no, we would continue with part-time.
And how long have you been looking into this? It sounds like quite a while.
Well, over the years, there, there's been some issues that come up where it's like, well, are we gonna, are we gonna have to, you know, separate? So this actually, this, this time it come up as probably, I, I'm gonna say about nine months to a year ago. And like I said, I, I'm not real sure because the mayor and the, the chief handled a lot of that, that was between the two chiefs and then they met, so I wasn't directly, you know, involved in that. So, but I've been, I've been tasked with this, chief asked me to start looking into this. It was, it was probably nine months ago or better. Just cuz he said he just had, you know, it looked like things, like they might be going a different direction and, and might be time for us to start looking towards this, so.
I understand.
Anyone else?
Yeah, comment, Jim, just real quick, you know, listening to the mayor and Assistant Chief Young, sounds like we're wanting to head this way, whether they, they're on board. And I hate being held hostage by what they're trying to do when we're talking about protecting our citizens on the west side. You know, I feel, I feel kinda like I'm a hostage waiting, are they gonna do, are they gonna pass their levy? You know, after two months, if they don't even get back to the mayor and say, hey, we're, we're still trying to get this together with that in two months and not even one response back, I just feel like I have no problem with going through with this because that's important to have our people on the west side. You know, y'all have been stuck behind that train many times on the way to work in the morning and sometimes I'm coming back from work when the train stops on them tracks. And I mean, you're there fifteen minutes, I don't know what happens. But to have our own people on that side of the tracks for this kinda money, I don't, I don't know why. You know, gonna wait to see what Clinton wants to do and it sounds like we're heading that direction anyhow. We've been discussing it for almost nine months, you know, trying to look into it, that's all I got, thanks.
So are we planning to man?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, are we planning to man this as soon as it is livable? We're not gonna wait until October third?
Oh no, we'd plan on honoring the contract. Yeah, we'll stay with the contract and two things on that.
So then this will sit, okay.
No, yeah, this would begin basically October fourth.
Okay.
The, either city had the option of putting the other one on notice if they wanted to terminate the contract early. But we literally had that specific conversation, myself and Mayor Allegra, that really no reason to do that, if, it's gonna terminate, it's self-terminating if we don't renew it. Two, two things on that, maybe three. One is, I don't mean to be heartless about it with our neighbors down there in Clinton. And we're just hearing a variety of things, you know, as, as you know, as we're transitioning into dispatch. We have a package price for them with police and the dispatches, police and fire dispatches included in that package price for policing. And when we go transitional with that, other communities that are gonna be signing up for the cog are gonna pay for dispatch and, and we've made it clear that we wouldn't look for Clinton to have to absorb that during this calendar year. And, and Green is okay with that, that they wouldn't have to. So we've tried to be, you know, as courteous as we could be. What I've been advised now, that apparently they're shopping prices for their dispatch as well to try to get dispatched from what is called the Red Center down in Stark County. You might know that there's petitions posted or signs posted that there are some people in Clinton who apparently want to, would like to become part of Stark County. And I've seen those. And so, but having said that, it, we wouldn't, we won't leave Clinton high and dry. I mean, we still have a mutual aid agreement with Clinton, when the calls come in, if they don't have people to cover it, our guys are gonna go and cover it. And if it's on the west side, they'll be coming from that west side station, like they always have. The station house itself, the refurbishing of that station house, when, 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 when that was done, what, ten, twelve years ago, however long it was, that, you know, they, they inherit that station. So they'll still have the station and, and, you know, we take our equipment out of it, but they still have, you know, they still have the station house. So they'll be able to, you know, they, they can run their, their fire from that same station. And so we're not by any means trying to leave them high and dry. I'm gonna elaborate just a little bit, it maybe it gives you an idea of why we, it's like, kinda what, what Mr. Stock said, it's, you know, sometimes, well, we could only wait so long. Because even if we wanted to renew this contract, now we gotta hammer out the contract and then we gotta, both councils gotta approve it, et cetera, et cetera. The disciplinary issue. The disciplinary issue. Involved an individual who was working part time for both departments. Am I correct, Chief? Okay.
Yes.
Uh. It there was a significant enough disciplinary issue that from our side. Uh, we put the individual on notice that we were considering discipline. Uh, and prior to the disciplinary proceedings moving forward, that individual resigned from New Franklin. Am I correct, Chief?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what happened next was. Clinton started assigning him to the joint station. And under our agreement. We are in charge of supervision for that station. So we have an individual that. Um arguably, it might have been terminated, but prior to termination, uh resigned. Uh, and Clinton decided that they were going to continue to assign him to the station. Which put us in a very difficult situation. Uh, and that's the issue that we grieved up to the point of mayors. And we let them know that that we, you know, we're in charge. We we've told this person he can't work here. It or he resigned prior to us making that determination and 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 you're putting him on, you know, you're putting him on to work and and we have issues, you know, we don't. We don't think that's in the best interest of New Franklin and that became a uh that was the impasse. Uh, and uh so we said, well, listen, before we go further with this through the courts. We might as well decide if you guys, do you want to do any business with this at all relative to fire? And um and I I reached out one more time in between these two months and I haven't heard anything back whatsoever and it just came a time that. Now from our side, the clock is ticking and we've got to make arrangements if we're gonna get this opened up and we feel all things considered. With that type of an atmosphere that that the citizens of New Franklin are better served if we uh go again to independent service. Uh, in the future, if Clinton needs us, we'll talk to him for sure. You know, I suppose we could jointly staff this facility up in the. Uh, at at Melody Village, just like we did the one down there, uh if they want to come back on board. So. Uh, there's still options available for Clinton, but for us, I think we, you know, we need to make the move.
Anyone else? I I guess my only concern is we're 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 looking to invest money. I just want to be sure that that we are moving forward with it and that it is not going to be something that's going to be. Um, you know, still up in the air, you know, if if yes, this is what we want to do. I agree. I think having having the just our people manning our. Station for our citizens is is a great idea and and uh, you know, we should do what we can to make it work. I just don't want to invest a lot of money. To not.
Understood.
Do it.
My question.
I agree.
So uh we are under a time crunch with this because uh it it appears we do have a an excellent deal. Uh, available to us that we need to take advantage of immediately as Assistant Chief Young mentioned, it won't be available. Uh, in another uh two or four weeks, um anybody have an issue with waiving three on this? Then we will ask to waive three on resolution twenty one R twenty nine. Moving on to resolution twenty one R thirty, a resolution uh authorizing the hiring of an additional full time service department road maintenance worker. And declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Uh, before we get into that, Assistant Chief Young, just want to say thank you for joining us tonight and and coming with a lot of information to help us. Uh, with this, uh I I don't know if uh we'll have any further need. Uh, so you're welcome to stay or. Whatever you prefer.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Um, I see we we have Mr. Kepler with us and Mr. Adamson, uh who would like to speak on the hiring of additional full time service personnel?
I'll jump in. Um, right now we have, as as the resolution indicates, we got six full time and we got uh. Um, the uh Deputy Service Director and a Road Superintendent, two, so two supervisors, six full time. Um, we've talked for quite a while of of uh that 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 department's thin. And uh that not, you know, when we became a city, we doubled the roads. Uh, that we're responsible for. We certainly didn't double the staff to take care of those roads. We got a variety of uh. Uh, of other service type. Uh. Uh responsibilities and jobs we'd like to tackle uh with ditch enclosures and drainage issues and and we're just short of manpower. What the reason I'm coming to you now and and suggesting that we hire another full time uh uh service worker. Uh, is um largely, it it very much a result of the difficulty in hiring seasonal employees. Uh, we've been able to supplement our our staff by hiring uh summer help. Uh, and then in the winter, we hire winter help and uh it's gotten harder and harder and harder to find people. To come on board and and work those uh and and uh Mr. Kepler can speak to that in just in in a minute, but uh. And we're in that same situation again, uh when we're trying, we've been advertising for quite a while for the seasonal people and I think we got one application. Uh, and uh, so uh it I we think it's time uh to add the an additional uh. Full time service department employee. Uh, and uh it's budgeted, uh we knew this was coming. Uh, it's not that gee, we got a lot of money, how quick we can spend it, but it it is a situation where at this point in time, we are in a financial situation where we can. You know, where we can absorb this, it's 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 uh it's been budgeted. Uh, I think what that means going down the road, needless to say, we're taking on, you know, additional. Uh, a full time employee, so additional debt there. And I think that's gonna have to, as we budget forward. Uh, we will take into consideration, you know, it it capital, uh purchases, et cetera. We're gonna have to, you know, we'll have to absorb this as we budget forward, but. Uh, so that's that's basically it. I think we need, we could use another person uh desperately, quite frankly. And uh because it's getting harder to hire seasonal, that's just one more reason. Uh, Brian, I don't know if I left anything for you or not, anything you want to add or support any of that or your thoughts on it?
Uh, you touched base without everything. I mean, we were uh. Seven people with a hundred and fifty lane miles in the past. Now we have two hundred and fifty two and we have eight people. So we're still. Way behind on the amount of people we need to take care of the roads, parks, cemeteries, so. Desperate need of.
We kind of knew this was coming when we uh created the assistant superintendent position. We knew that we would have a spot to fill. Um, and 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 I certainly agree, we need that with uh with six people, uh workers. You know, one, one person goes on vacation, one person gets sick, now you're down to four and and trying to get things done and having somebody in the road to direct traffic or. Or whatever the other issues might be that come up, uh it's certainly needed. I I guess one question I have is one enough.
Let's start with one. It's a start.
Uh, and if I could, Mr. Cots, there were some questions came in earlier today. The uh probationary period for the road maintenance worker is. One year. Correct me if I'm wrong on that because a couple of the union contracts have a little shorter period. Uh, but uh it's it's, I believe that one's a one year period. The hourly rate they come in at is twenty one dollars and sixty cents. That comes out to about forty four thousand dollars annually. Um, the uh benefits, there was a question about full time benefits. That's pursue, that's consistent with the union contract. Uh, and it includes what you would expect, uh vacation when when you have sufficient uh service. Uh, sick days, health insurance, um are the primary, uh and the uh. The employment, the the match that the city makes for uh the retirement. So those are the basic benefits for a road maintenance worker, but. This individual would come in at the starting rate of twenty one dollars and sixty cents per hour.
After probationary, what does it go up to, Paul?
It it doesn't raise, uh it's the same rate after probation. Uh, it after that, it goes up with years of service. Am I right about that, Brian?
Yes, I think it's a three, three year step.
And uh.
Brian. Do you have anybody in mind that you're gonna hire?
Not yet. I'm gonna advertise if it passes.
Do you think it's gonna be a tough position to fill?
By what I'm seeing with the seasonal help, yes, and the seasonal help and, you know, winter and summer. I mean, I'm, they're not beating down our door at all.
Well, as Brian knows, because I call him quite routinely, most calls I ever get as a council member are about roads. Drainage, the ditches. We get calls on other things, but most consistently, I have had to have Brian come out on. Different issues and he's always been there, but you're right with the lack of. Personnel or everybody's at one job that leaves a hole at another spot or somebody's gone and there was that problem with the cemetery and. And personnel and I think this is a long time in coming and honestly, Jim, I concur. If it's gonna take a while to hire somebody, I I sooner rather than later, maybe think about. You know, the qualifications of somebody coming in, how able are you to meet that? If you get a couple of qualified people. I I say bring it to us, Jim, i- if you agree, um you're you're sorely in need of uh of help. Our citizens want you to have more help.
I I agree with. Okay, sorry.
No, I just think that being said, if you get qualified people. And you want to come to us, let's have that discussion. I can't speak for other people, but I I don't want you to let a couple of good people go because I really do think that it's hard to. Hire uh qualified people right now. So keep that in mind.
Thank you.
I I agree completely and and I think that we we also have our our person that did the mowing last year is now one of our full time people. Um, so we we definitely need one and probably most definitely need that a a second one. Uh, I we're coming into to the season, uh storm season, there's there's going to be, you know, trees and whatnot coming down. Uh, we need to be ready for it. So uh I I agree with Ms. Norris, if 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 you've got a a second person out there, uh you know. Hit us right away because I I think, you know, we really need to consider that strongly. Who else has a question or comment? I think we'll ask the way the three readings on this. Okay, uh, thank you. We'll move on to resolution twenty one R thirty one, a resolution establishing the full time position of service department administrative assistant. And declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. We currently have a part time administrative assistant there. And the need is to make that full time. Uh, who wants to jump first?
Well, I will. Uh, there was a typo. I indicated in the second whereas clause, it says that we established that part time position in July of twenty twenty one. That should be July of twenty twenty. Uh, and uh I would just say at this point, this is something we budgeted for as well. Uh, that was, let's let's see how this works. It turns out we got an individual there is doing a fabulous job. Uh, and it I think the need was obvious. Uh, it's certainly, I'll speak for Brian, then he can speak for himself, but takes so much. So much time and energy he had to spend doing administrative stuff and answering calls and returning calls and now he's out there in the field. So. You know, that that's helpful from that situation. Uh, the individual who's in this position. Uh, was at sixteen dollars eighty one cents an hour and she was working about thirty hours a week or a little bit under. And it comes out to about twenty five thousand dollars annually. Um, it's not a big, it's not much of a bump for this person. Uh, we will advertise and but likely just advertise and hire from within on this and she's a likely candidate. Uh, she would still be at that same hourly rate, but it would be at forty hours. And it comes out to about thirty four, just a little bit under thirty five thousand, um as opposed to the twenty five thousand. Um, but she will also be entitled to benefits. There were questions about what those were for. This is a non-union position. Um, the benefits are very similar to the union contracts. That's something that councils pretty much always tried to uh be fair about. Uh, and there was a question about where you can get details on these. The uh union contracts are all pub, all these are public record. Uh, and uh I I don't know that we got them posted on our website, but if you, anybody wants to see the union contracts, let us know. You can come in here and review them anytime you want to. We can get you copies of them if you'd like that. Um, the benefits for non-union are in our policy manual, which was just recently adopted late last fall. Uh, and they essentially mirror the benefits similar to what I spoke to for the uh road maintenance worker. But um on this one, you know, it's it's it becomes a permanent position. We're gonna spend uh uh salary wise, um. I don't know if the if the benefits come to twenty, it it may be fifty four, fifty five thousand. It could be an extra thirty thousand a year to make this a full time position. Uh, unfortunately for the individual, she's not gonna take home much more pay, uh because she was, you know, there was. In she was an independent contractor, but that's neither here nor there. Uh, it's probably long overdue again that to have a full time person in that office and. So we're we're asking you to turn that into a full time position. Brian, you want to speak to this?
You touched perfectly on that. It, yeah, it it will help. Help us out a great deal. I mean, even though she's part time, she still comes in half an hour from early, leaves. Sometimes hour or two later, just to keep going on what she's working on. So, I mean. She's a huge asset to our department and. I'm sure people like. Like her answering the phone a lot better than me. It helps. So if we can get her full time, that would be wonderful.
Am I, am I recalling correctly that this person was also an admin for the police department or another department? Is that true?
No, we had the police admin covering this. Uh, yeah, but uh.
Not the same person, okay.
Anyone else? Questions, comments, concerns? Song? Okay, uh with no objections, we will ask to waive the three readings on this one also. And that concludes the uh finance committee at six forty nine.
Right, thanks, Jim. I got one thing here I'm gonna ask since we got Brian right here coming off the uh Facebook feed. Somebody said they had missed a few meetings. Did we hear any word back about the extremely congested transition culvert drain between Turkey Foot going behind? Cantalina, Catalina Drive and Coleman. It is by far the fullest I have ever seen this creek. I will only, only going to get, it will only be getting worse. It's a hot summer. The stagnant water is going to be atrocious. Last year was bad. Hope it's will not create a real algae plume rather. Close, close to swim park. Do you know anything about this? Uh, Ryan?
I reached out and spoke to ODNR about dredging that out, getting bringing their machine down and we were gonna work with them of pulling the. Settlement out of the lake. Uh, I was supposed to meet him there a couple of different times, conflicts. We didn't meet up. I need to reach out to him again. Uh, it, they used to do it in the past, clean it out every now and then, but that was. The county slash ODNR, the state, uh. The water, I think, is pretty close to the same level. I mean, I've lived there right by it. Uh, it is sealed it in, but it's still flowing out. Big rain pushes that out further, but. It needs to be cleaned out, but it's not gonna cause an issue backing up, I don't feel.
All right.
But I'll reach back out to them and. See if we can meet and. Take a couple loads out of there will be huge.
All right, great.
Huge help.
That we we got a fantastic out of that response, so thank you. All right, okay, catch back up there. Thank you, Jim. We're gonna move to. Community development.
Right, open, uh open community development, six fifty one. We have a second reading, resolution twenty one R twenty eight. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Mason's Cove LLC. For the administration, management, development, operation and maintenance of the New Franklin Tudor House Civic Center. Declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. I don't know about the rest of you. I have heard a thing since we brought this up uh two weeks ago. And I I mean, unless someone has some more uh reasons or why I I I don't know why we wouldn't waive the last reading and vote on this tonight.
I agree, Andy. I've heard nothing. I think it's a pretty good opportunity because in the end, if it don't work out, it's still ours.
It's still ours. It's gonna alleviate some of the maintenance from uh service department down there, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think it's a pretty good opportunity for just for our community, the people that live out here.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a pretty nice addition and Mr. Kanter has quite a few good ideas and. I don't know. I think I think it's gonna be great. I still have that trepidation, but I don't, just me. I think it's gonna be great anyhow, you know, and uh. I don't know why we wouldn't want to move on it tonight.
Yeah, I feel the same way, but it like you're losing a little bit of something, but we're gonna gain, but we're not really, in in the end, we're not losing it. I mean, it's still, it's our property and it's gonna be ours and if at the end of the contract, they said we're done with it. And we got a heck of a nice place down there if everything goes as planned.
Yep, I agree. Does anyone have anything else to add?
I think one, oh, I'm sorry. I think one of the, uh, important things to remember about this is that both the, the park commission and the Tudor House Commission have unanimously, uh. Voted in favor of this and these are people that, uh, put a lot of, uh, blood, sweat and tears into, um. Uh, into the Tudor House and, and have a deep love for the property and with them approving it, uh. Who am I to say, you know, something different than what, than what they've, their opinion? So I'm comfortable moving forward.
I agree with that. That's what's pushed me over the edge too, um, with the, both, both of those committees agreeing to it.
And it's almost as if they want to do something good for the Tudor House. They're seeing that this will be beneficial for the Tudor House.
Absolutely.
Yep. Okey-dokey, we will close at six fifty-four.
All right, great. Thanks, Andy. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss in their committees?
Say, can we do this now while Brian's on the screen still? Um, we had a specific question about, uh, property over on West Comet.
Yes.
Um, and drainage issue over there. Um, it, can you address that, Brian? Many of you may not know, but I mean, it's, it's a, it's a section over on West Comet, not too far off of ninety-three. Uh, on the, uh, south side of the, uh, of West Comet. Uh, and, uh, okay, Brian, can you tell us what's up over there?
And I only saw that email right before I signed on to this, so I tried to research back in, uh. July of nineteen, uh, she did email me about cleaning the ditch out. Sixteen, she emailed again. Uh, I did not get back with her. She, I think, emailed the mayor and. Came to a meeting, uh, that was, uh, eight of nineteen. Then she responded with, uh, thank you for cleaning the ditch out. So the ditch has been cleaned. She wanted, uh, the ditch reclaimed last spring. I did not clean it because it's right at the bottom of the pipe. We can't dig it deeper than what the pipe flows. And anything that goes back off the road right away. We can't get to it to clean it out. It's private property. Uh, so everything along the road, along the ditch has been cleaned, it's been removed. Uh. So I, I was kind of confused by that email. Me not getting back to her, not taking care of it. And yes, a couple of times I did respond to her in March. And I think she responded back in, uh, March, well, that was March sixth and then March eighth, so.
Okay.
There was transactions back and forth, but I'm not going, I can't clean the ditch deeper than what the pipe flows as it is and it's.
You'll take, you'll take, can you, can you take another look at it and?
Yeah, less than in the last, you know.
How long has it been since you were out there?
Uh, beginning, uh, I think the middle of February.
Oh, all right, okay.
So I mean, it's, I've checked and it's right at the bottom of the pipe.
Okay.
Now, it does turn and there's some trees down across the stream back in their property, but. That's private.
Okay.
And we can't go back and, uh, take, move those trees. I think they had someone moving. Unless we're, I'm not on the same line as they are, but.
All right.
Everything out along the comments cleared.
And I'll follow up too and, and, and on that as well, but all right, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mr. Stock.
Thank you.
David?
Yes.
I, I have a question for Brian while he's still here. Have you had an opportunity, Brian, to get back with people in West Nimasilo about your drainage problem?
Which one?
The one, it was the one I called you on. The gentleman's name is Joe. And it was that one, did you get back with him?
I stopped up there. We fixed the sink pole on Harder Home yesterday. I did not call him today. But I don't think that fixed his problem. It was something different, but I, I took pictures of it and I was going to. Stop there today and I got sidetracked with the. Water project, so.
I understand. And I have a question on the cemetery. That's a question you can answer. Am I correct? Maybe.
Find out.
Yes.
A resident in New Franklin can buy. The cemetery plot, am I correct?
Yes.
Say, if I went to buy two lots, then am I prohibited from giving those as gifts to someone else?
I think that's in the rules of a non-resident you're talking about.
Yes.
Yes. You cannot intentionally buy. At a resident price and give it to a non-resident. It's two different prices and that's another thing in the works of rearranging that structure of the cemetery. But at this time. You can't.
Yeah, that rule has been around for a very long time that you cannot, um, buy, that a resident cannot buy graves with the intention of giving it to a non-resident. To avoid them paying that cost.
So that would be even if you had them and we're not going to use them, you could not give them to a non-resident.
So what, what's stated in those rules? Yes.
Thank you. And you're, you're rearranging those rules now? Is that what you said?
Well, we're.
Looking into them?
Trying to meet with the mayor and talk with him and it's, it's, it's on his stack to do, but it hasn't been priority.
I understand.
We're trying to rearrange your team there, it is.
Here's how close it is. It's our lane. We've been working, we've been trying to get, you know, a lot closer than I have been, so. Uh. Yeah, we are, we're, we're, we're going to take another look at them. And I would say this, in particular settings, you know, I, we try to be as accountable, you know, as, as, uh, agreeable as we can be and. Let's say if somebody has them, they just, you know, they never, they didn't buy them for that purpose, but they want to do that. I don't know, maybe we would just charge the difference between what a non-residence would pay and, and, uh, and, and something like that.
That's what I wondered.
Yeah, we try to be as reasonable as we can with that stuff.
Thank you.
Anything else for committee? All right. Look at that. Like to call the order, the city of New Franklin. City council meeting Wednesday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty at seven PM. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Can we get a roll call please?
Mr. Cotts?
Present.
Mr. Hargit?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Hawk?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here, thank you. Like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting of April seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
First and second, any questions, discussion on the meeting, on the minutes? Roll call please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. I'd like to also make a motion to approve the financials for March twenty twenty-one, subject to audit.
Second.
A first and second, any discussion? All right, roll call please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. I got a public comment. I'm sitting on my deck watching it snow on April twenty-first. Big old snowflakes. All right, that was my public comment. I don't see much, I picked up some of them and read them earlier. Yeah, I don't see any other. Am I missing anything, Katie?
No, I don't see anything else either.
All right. Well, we're going to move on then to our legislation this evening. Again, we have three first readings and one second, no third pending. Start out with the resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-nine, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Advantage Homes LLC. For the purchase and installation of a two thousand twenty-one Adventure sixteen by seventy-six Nevada. Six-seven, six-three B dash N modular housing unit. For the use at the West Side Fire Station and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on twenty-one R twenty-nine.
Second. Second.
For second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-one R twenty-nine.
Second.
First and second. Roll call please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero, thank you. Move to resolution number twenty-one dash R dash thirty, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing the hiring of an additional full-time service department. Road maintenance worker and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on twenty-one R thirty.
Second.
First and second, roll call please.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-one R thirty.
Second.
First and second, any discussion, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
All right. A little distracted there. Pass seven to zero, thank you. Move to, uh, resolution number twenty-one dash R dash thirty-one, Kelly.
A resolution establishing the full-time position of service department administrative assistant. And declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-one R thirty-one as amended.
Second.
First and second, roll call please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-one R thirty-one as amended.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes seven zero. That takes care of our first readings. Move over to our second reading of resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-eight, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Mason's Cove LLC. For the administration, management, development, operation and maintenance of the New Franklin Tudor House Civic Center. And declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This was assigned to community development and I moved that we waived the last reading.
Second.
First and second, roll call please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Right, I moved that we adopt resolution twenty-one R dash twenty-eight.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
That's great. Unanimous, I like to see that. Very good. I think it's a great opportunity for our whole community. It's going to be. Something that's going to be, I think, super special already, but I think it's going to just take it to the next level.
I agree.
Thank you. All right, that takes care of our legislation this evening. Going to move into, I think, not only my favorite part of the meeting, I think everybody's favorite. Oh, I mean mayor's report.
Thank you. We've covered a lot and, uh, we got, we got more to go, so I'll try to. Well, all right, let me fire away. First of all, I really appreciate the, uh, support of everybody involved on this, uh, Tudor House. Venture, uh, that's the parks commission, the Tudor House Commission. We had plenty of good input from citizens on this. Uh, and as a result of that, the footprint changed. So there, there was a responsiveness to the complaints we heard early on. Uh, about a lakefront pavilion, for instance, and, and, and so we, you know, there, there was a response to that. And, and I think that's why we, we quit hearing complaints because we addressed them and it was a healthy process. Um, and I think it's going to be a fabulous thing for the city, uh, and we will, you know, we, we, we gave up nothing and, and, uh. We, we preserved all of our current benefits, et cetera. So, thank you. Uh, next big venture, tennis pickleball. The Manchester Board of Education last evening approved the, uh. Donation of three point three acres of land over at the Sisler Complex. Uh, to New Franklin, uh, and the, uh, with a reservation back to them if we don't build tennis courts within two years. Uh, and we agreed that we would let their, their sports teams have priority to the courts, which I don't think it's going to be a problem. We're also opening it up. The next priority will be to the other school districts who want, if in fact, they want to use it for their events. Uh, and then beyond that, um, the, uh. Maybe the bigger, and what's attracted more of the enthusiasm in, in New Franklin is the pickleball courts. Well, actually, it's kind of. Even, we created a nets committee and we've got, uh, the tennis coach from, from Manchester who's a professional tennis player. Uh, and several tennis advocates, and then we've got another half a dozen pickleball nuts. Uh, who go all over the place to be able to play and they keep telling me how big this is, and they're not nuts, they're great, great people. Uh, Steve Godar, who put together the Disc Golf over at Portage Lake State Park. We got Robert Keith, our videographer, who's a national representative for pickleball. So we really have a stellar group, uh, to, to put this together. Uh, the, uh, we will be meeting, um, at the end of this month for final. Approval of the, uh, uh, of, of what we want this to look like and we're going to be bidding it in the, uh. We're going to ask Kevin Noble to, to put the bids out with some alternates. Uh, it's, uh, definitely going to be six tennis courts because that's the minimum they need for this competitive play. Uh, and then, uh, either four pickleball courts or eight pickleball courts. And we're going to see the alternative pricing on that. We'll do the lighting as an alternate. Uh, and we'll see what that might cost in, in the event that we have to space out, uh, some of the expense on this thing. We have, uh, applied for two separate grants, um, totaling about four hundred thousand dollars. Um, and, uh, and the fact that we have this nets committee of, of dedicated citizens is big for both of those. The Parks Committee, as I told you previously, uh, they've committed to this as their big next project. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars already set aside for this. Uh, my best guess is this is going to come in four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and we knew that coming in. Um, the, uh, so we got a hundred and fifty immediately that we can dedicate to it. We're going to see how this grant money comes in and we, we should know that by end of summer. Uh, whether we're successful on these grants. Um, if we're not successful, the plan would be to, to finance this in one way or another and, and whether or not we can self-finance it because. Parks is committed to, we've got about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar carryover in parks, separate and apart from the one fifty we'll spend on this. Um, as you know, uh, we've got some cleanup expenses over at the Tudor House, but going into next year, we're not going to have that expense anymore. Uh, the money that we had to spend for maintenance, et cetera, over at the Tudor House. So the, 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 the parks budget is healthy. It's in good shape. There's an infusion every year of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Most of that money has been dedicated to. And and the fact that we have this nets committee of dedicated citizens is big for both of those. The Parks Committee, as I told you previously, they've committed to this as their big next project. We have $150,000 already set aside for this. My best guess is this is gonna come in $400,000 to $600,000. And we knew that coming in. The so we got 150 immediately that we can dedicate to it. We're gonna see how this grant money comes in and we should know that by end of summer, whether we're successful on these grants. If we're not successful, the plan would be to to finance this in one way or another and and whether or not we can self-finance it because Parks is committed to, we've got about a $250,000 carryover in Parks, separate and apart from the 150 we'll spend on this. As you know, we've got some cleanup expenses over at the Tudor House, but going into next year, we're not gonna have that expense anymore, the money that we had to spend for maintenance, et cetera, over at the Tudor House. So the 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 Parks budget is healthy. It's in good shape. There's an infusion every year of about $150,000. Most of that money has been dedicated to ball fields in the past in Parks and the Tudor House. They're all in good shape. So we can dedicate as much of that as we need to to cover the balance of this. And it might be a situation where, and I gotta work more with Susan on this, and and we'll see where the grants follow. And ultimately, it'll be on your plate to to decide to go forward with it. But it may be, in my mind, is conceivably, if we had to, we could self-finance this over a three-year period with our parks and cover it. And I think it's just gonna be a tremendous addition. So the there'll be the final planning will be at the end of this month. The Nets Committee would meet in the last Thursday. Kevin will get the bid packages out in May. The bids will come in hopefully sometime in June. And we'll see what we're looking at and we'll get some idea what the expense is gonna be. And I can tell you, there's an awful lot of enthusiasm in the community for this project. A lot of people that say, yeah, yeah.
What's your best case scenario, starting next year, if you get the grants?
Yeah, if we get the grants, we could start and we could start construction at the, you know, late fall. There's gonna have to be some clearing done and we might the spotted owl or whatever it is that you're not allowed to know. Brian Shing has said that you can't do any clearing these summer months. So we probably we missed that window. But maybe we do the clearing in the fall and and then we could do the construction in the spring. So that's the hope. The the footprint for this, man, I tell you, if you haven't been back to the Sisler complex for a while, it's really amazing how much is there. I told you I was gonna go short, so I'll try to wrap this up. But you know, we got the three ball fields up front. All right. And then just to the just to the, let's see, the south of the ball fields, there's a soccer field, which we spent some money on this year to improve the drainage on that. Okay. Now, you know, on the and it is parking right there by that soccer field. If you looked, the road that runs back through there, the middle school's on the left-hand side when you come in, and you come back to the eighth grade football field. And when you go across this, right directly across from the eighth grade football field, that's where that's the three acres that we just acquired. But when you go back further, we know Crown Field sits over there, but there's there's two other major soccer fields back there. Some of you may know that. You might have watched your kids or grandchildren play back there. But I'm telling you, there is a lot of traffic and a lot of use of that Sisler complex. And it's it's really, it's beautiful. So this will just be another crowning jewel sitting right in the middle of it. So that's what's going on there. And we'll keep you posted. South Main Street closure begins next Monday. The this is where they're bringing the water. We always knew this was happening. It's over by Giuseppe. So they have to bring the water down from, and they've already, I think they've installed some of this, down East Caston to Main, and then they have to go south on Main to get to West Caston. To do that, there's been all kinds of complications. The sanitary sewers have preliminary design work where they've allotted out space where their sanitary sewers are gonna be. There's gas lines in there. ODNR has been involved in the mix because they have drainage issues through there with the Nimasila reservoir. And so we knew it was gonna have to be closed at some point in time. We were told it was gonna be five days. In fact, that stretch there, it's all green. We don't own any of that piece of highway from from West Caston to East Caston on South Main. That's all in the city of green. So we got a word on on Monday that, oops, it's gonna be 12 days instead of five. And we're starting next Monday. So I will tell you that I wasn't happy that it was suddenly gone from five to 12. And we were able to convene a, I'll call it an emergency meeting. I didn't shrink the 12 days, but at least we had some accountability. And we had Aqua in there and we had Mayor Newt Jabauer and we all met yesterday afternoon about four o'clock with all the engineers. And it's the only way to do it. And it's so, so South Main will be closed from center to East Caston. And they're gonna put all the signage up and they're saying, you know, that'll start Monday and it's targeted to be over by the Friday, May 7th, two weeks. So I've just tonight talked to Bizessi's Bike Shop, which is now owned by the Clarks, which we're happy about that, about making sure that we have enough signage to make sure there's access to that business. We there's gonna be access to the, there's, as you know, a bunch of apartments there and and there's another business down there close to the restaurant. So we'll do everything we can for access and signage. And that's gonna be from, we put it on the website today and we put the the detour, which is the problem with this, there's no easy way around. So if you come on from South Main, south, you'll be able to make a left-hand turn at East Caston. You won't be able to go through that intersection. The people that live back there in Schreick's Hotel and Clement, that, you know, they'll be able to circle back to their residences, but they won't be able to get back out. So the base of the official detour is Center Road to 93, 93 to 619, 619 up to Main. And God bless everybody. I appreciate you being patient. Dispatch is on schedule to close on May 10th. They're going through the interview process. Everything's going pretty smoothly and 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 that looks like that's on course to happen as advertised. The parade is also on course to happen as advertised. So we got the final go ahead for that. We'll be announcing the the grand marshal here soon. I put something on the website, but it's an individual, all of you know. I'm not gonna reveal them until we do a press release, but Vietnam veteran with not one but two Purple Hearts. And we're gonna be inviting other Vietnam veterans specifically to join the float with him and 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 help honor him and themselves at the Memorial Day Parade, which is gonna happen. And we're thrilled about that. Sunday, May 30th, the day before Memorial Day, will be a Tudor House event. It is called, what's it called, Katie?
Sorry, unmute. Sail into summer.
Sail into summer. And we're gonna have some different vendors, Portage Lakes vendors. I think we got about 30 committed to come out for that. And we'll have some food trucks. We'll have some beer and we'll have some wine. And it's a Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, and we hope everybody will come out and and enjoy the enjoy the grounds and enjoy the the Tudor House and and the and check out the vendors. So that's gonna happen on Sunday, May 30th. The last thing I'm gonna mention is police staffing. I will be coming to you most likely with a resolution to add an additional police officer. And the staffing issues were brought to my attention this week. We rely on our part-time for an awful lot of shifts. I did some quick math. There's basically 63 shifts each week. You got three guys, you you got three officers and you got three shifts. So you got nine officers, seven days a week is 63. We're covering about 20 of those at times with part-timers. And that's good. It's economical for us. What I'm being advised, we may be, one of our part-timers who's putting in a lot of hours might be accepting a full-time somewhere. And at the same time, it's getting more difficult to find part-timers in police. And that may not be a surprise to you. First of all, they're hiring everywhere. And Akron, for instance, is hiring 50. So and the last couple that we've looked at just didn't quite fit the bill. So it it may be necessary and desirable to add a full-time position there to eat up a lot of these part-time hours just because we, you know, it's tough to get the part-timers. We'll talk more about that and we'll have an opportunity to discuss it. But I wanted to give you a heads up that that's that's likely coming down the road. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Dave, I have a question here. Mayor, I'm not seeing the big picture down at Sisler. Do we like maybe have a drawing or something set up to where you can put it in the ground there so people can see what we're doing with the tennis courts and maybe have an idea what's going on?
Absolutely.
I'd like to see someday, maybe more things get put into Sisler Road. I don't, Sisler Park, like shuffleboard or horseshoes, you know, things like that.
I I couldn't agree with you more. So I will absolutely do that. I tell you, one thing we need down there is a permanent restroom. And we re we 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 filed again for our pavilion over there. I don't know how that'll be received. We're trying. If 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 we get that, then that solves the restroom issue. At least if not, I think we're gonna think about a just a standalone permanent restroom there that would service not just the ball fields, but also the tennis and the pickleball, et cetera. But that's a good idea, Mr. Hawke. We'll try to get an artist depiction and of what that might look like. The idea of expanding to shuffleboard, bocce, and those kind of things, I think are a great idea. We have those same ideas down the road, perhaps for Grill Park. And I think that would be a perfect, those would be perfect fits for Grill Park because we really can't do baseball fields over there. So that's a direction we're trying to move, without a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Susan, finance?
Hi, everybody. We don't, we are obviously busy as usual. There's always some reports or something to do, like the gap in financial and audit. So we're continuing to keep busy. I do have actually have some files with me right now, so I can give you the March balance. The unencumbered balance for March was $6,613,413.13. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Business. Old business. New business? Judy, I'm looking right at you.
I'm looking forward to getting back to 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 the events at the Tudor House. I missed them last year. It was nice the previous year. It was a good time every time we were there. So looking forward to it.
I agree. Yep. I'm looking forward to that. That sounds pretty good. Food trucks and all that sounds real good.
Amen. Yes.
I gotta stop eating like a week before that because I can't get enough of them food trucks. All right. Any other new business? How many people we got watching tonight, Katie? We don't got many responses. Do you see?
Yeah, we've had about between 20 and 25 for most of the evening. But yeah, not a lot lately.
Because I don't see any anything, any questions or anything. We must not be messing stuff up too bad then, huh? All right. Well, we come to that point, Paul.
Yeah, at this point, we are gonna need executive session to discuss pending litigation with with our attorney.
Okay.
And we do not anticipate any action being taken afterwards. Normally, we'd all walk back into the into the council room. We'll be back live on TV, but we're gonna have to terminate the live stream to be consistent with the requirements of of executive session. And we're not planning on re-engaging the live stream because we'll only be coming back on to to adjourn executive session and or resume executive session and then adjourn. So with that, we would need a motion for that purpose to.
Yeah. Okay. I moved that we go into executive session for the purpose of pending litigation.
Second.
You got a second. I get a roll call, please.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes. No formal actions will be taken during this executive session. I also like to say our next council meeting will be May 5th, 2021. We'll start our committees at 6 o'clock. We'll see you all then.